Gee, probably.
All right, I just told her.
She's having to do it.
No.
I'm not sitting in the normal spot. So you just sneak out.
Okay, oh, so you can sneak out. Unbelievable. I won't quote you on that.
But we need to, uh, just, uh, the clock. Is there anyone in the public?
There's no one to speak.
Should've come see you this week. This week, I'm sorry. Write a prayer.
I need to write one. And it's just too short.
Oh, yeah.
We have anything for Thursday? Oh, nine hundred?
Nine hundred?
Oh, nine hundred hours.
Yeah.
Working on it. I asked them to. Well, any, any member, any member of council. That's what you don't want.
Hey, we're all here. Erica, call the, the role, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Best?
Present.
Councilman Bahad?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There is a quorum present. All right, thank you. Uh, let's all stand, please, for the invocation by Vice Mayor Jackie Bravo.
God, you are the builder of all things. Please guide us in this meeting. Help us come up with effective strategies that can enable us to move forward as a team in a meaningful way. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us toward the best way to take action to accomplish our goals. Help us to tackle all the topics we need to discuss, come up with excellent solutions, and leave this me- meeting feeling inspired. Amen.
Now, we'd like to, um, ask the Boy Scouts that are here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guys, guys.
Got a face of flag.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You scouts. Hey, welcome, everyone, to our meeting tonight of, uh, November eighth. The first agenda item is, um, the awards and presentations. And we have, uh, the first, uh, item under awards and presentations is the Officer of the Month Award for the month of October twenty twenty. Officer Rafael Dominguez.
Also, I'd like to call up, uh, Sergeant Al Vargas, who'll be reading the nomination letter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On October ninth, two thousand twenty-one, Officer Dominguez observed a vehicle committed traffic infraction on Coolidge Drive in South Rowland Ciana Boulevard. He conducted a traffic stop on the vehicle at the six hundred block of Reagan Drive. While approaching the vehicle, Officer Dominguez quickly noticed a strong odor of cannabis emanating from the interior of the vehicle. While speaking to the driver, he noticed the driver appear nervous, was sweating profusely, and was looking around in all directions. The driver consented to a search of the interior of the vehicle, including the trunk area. A search of the vehicle revealed two storage containers and they, and a brown leather duffel bag which contained twenty-seven individually vacuum sealed bags containing cannabis. The total weight of the cannabis found in the vehicle amounted to thirty-one point seven pounds. The driver of the vehicle was arrested for trafficking cannabis. I would like this, to take this opportunity to commend Officer Dominguez and his proactive patrol techniques. Due to the aforementioned incident, I'm recommending that Officer Dominguez receive the Officer of the Month for October of twenty twenty-one.
As you know, excuse me, traffic is one of the biggest things that, that we deal with, and we're constantly getting complaints, uh, about speeding and, and things of that nature. But, uh, don't forget how dangerous a traffic stop can be. In a period of, what, ten days? Uh, Officer Airbar stopped the car with forty pounds of cannabis, and then Officer Dominguez, thirty pounds. So you never know what you're stopping, and when I hear the news say a routine traffic stop, that really upsets me. Because there is no such thing as a routine traffic, traffic stop. We've had, uh, numerous off, numerous officers in Miami-Dade County and throughout the country seriously injured or killed during traffic stops. So I commend Officer Dominguez and all the officers, uh, that are out there every day, uh, doing their job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Officer Dominguez and all the officers. Thank you again, Officer Dominguez, for serving our city, protecting us. Um, the next item on the agenda is Yard of the Month Award for November, and that goes to Midaglia Alfonso at two eight six. Manola? Hello? I think Erica, we have gone to go get it. Did Erica go get it?
Buenas noches. Felicidades. Ya te van a coger tu, tu cosita.
Thank you so much for being here.
As it should be.
Okay, um, we'll get them their certificate, um, in a momentarily. But thank you so much for keeping, for all the residents that work so hard to keep our yards beautiful. It really, sometimes it's, it's just such a pleasure when you're driving around Miami Springs and you notice these yards that you know the families that live there have put in so much effort, um, to beautify it, and it's not just for them, it's for all of us that are driving by. So we really appreciate it. And by the way, the Yard of the Month Award is through our, one of our clubs, advisory clubs, the, uh, Parks Board, uh, goes by every month, and they nominate the Yard of the Month. They drive around Miami Springs and, um, and look at all the homes and nominate that. So that's one of the services of our advisory, uh, Parks Board. Okay, the next, um, agenda item is, uh, recognizing our November City Hall Lobby Artist of the Month, Gladys Perez Villanueva. And she has beautiful artwork downstairs decorating our city hall for this month. So thank you so much. Um, okay, let's go ahead and move on. Our next agenda item is introduction of our new City Public Information Officer. Shannon J, is it Jaser? Jasser? Jaser. Hi, Shannon, come on up. Hey, Shannon, do you mind coming here to the podium? Welcome. Thank you so much for, for joining us for the City of Miami Springs. We look forward to having you here and working as our, um, City Public Information Officer.
Yeah, I'm very grateful. It's a really, really good job. It's a really good community to live in as well.
Thank you. Tell us just, and I know you've just started some, I don't want to put you on the spot, but just some of the thoughts that you've got for, um, you know, going forward of, um, what you see that-
Showing a little bit more about the community, um, on social media. Um, really focusing on the events and residents and city hall staff, um, just doing like a little bit more of a spotlight on community members. Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. And, and I think, um, I, um, I think the council, um, this is something that we've talked about in the past, and we would like to ask you going forward also is, um, to improve our social media presence. Um, that's something we have, we had a newsletter that I think was going out to the residents at one time. I'm not sure the status. So I know these are all things that you're just starting, you've got to get your bearings, but, um, one of the things we'd really like to do is, is do that of, um, increasing, um, the contacts that we have on social media, on, on Facebook, Twitter, I guess.
Absolutely.
Instagram, so that we can reach the residents, um, looking at the newsletter and other issues, whatever you find that you think we can grow and really communicate. Um, we want to improve our means of communication with our residents and with our community. So that would be awesome.
Forward to doing that. Thank you.
Is there anything, anyone else?
Oh, wel- welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you so much. And you're here with your family, with your beautiful husband and children.
My two daughters and my partner David, yes.
You know, Shannon, there's a lot you can do with this job. You know that, right?
Yes.
Sky's the limit.
Yeah.
And we're, we're very open to your input, your suggestions of, you know, of how we can grow at, um, with social media, with just reaching, with everything, anything to do with, you know, communicating with our residents and our community, our business owners and everything.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Very excited to be here.
Thank you so much. You chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to take- First of all, thank the Scouts for leading us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Um, as, as many of you know, my son Victor on him, uh, is an Eagle Scout. Three, three, four, and, and there's always the concern because Eagle Scout is like the top rank for Scouts and a lot of steps in between. There's a lot of hard work, and it's all worth it. Uh, but as, uh, folks will leave the Scouts and the parents, there's always the concern of other, you know, that other kids are following in the footsteps. So I'm pleased to see so many of you here tonight, and I understand, uh, some of you are working on your citizenship in the community merit badge. Is that the one you're working on? Yes? Wonderful. Yeah, my son was here, uh, working on that himself. Uh, for those of you that aren't familiar, uh, merit badge is one of the most important tasks for Scouts because it helps them, um, get well-rounded preparation and leads them to, uh, getting that coveted recognition of Eagle Scouts. As we salute the flag this evening and do that as part of our duty as citizens of this great country, reading our patriotism. And as a former scout myself, uh, the Boy Scouts is one of those organizations that really has an impact, and of course, my colleague, uh, Councilman Fajad as well, uh, in rounding out true citizens and patriots in this country. So, and I'd be remiss to say if I didn't thank the Scout Masters, right, who put in all the work and also not help, not only help train the, the Scouts, but also act as role models for them as well. Moms and dads, uh, thank you for, uh, all that work, because it's all of your time as well. We appreciate, uh, the Scouts here, the troop, three, three, four, and the Cub Scout PAC four twenty-five. So thank you all. Thank you, Ellie. Thank you, guys.
Okay, and that, um, moves us to open forum, and we do have, um, in open forum, we have the Scout Master who's going to speak. Vic, Victor, you know him? You know? Vincent Victor. Big, no, thank you. I have trouble reading handwriting.
I'd like to take credit for being Scout Master, but I'm not, I'm the Assistant Scout Master. That credit goes to James, who does a wonderful job, uh, with the, with the troop. So, um, distinguished council members, uh, mayor, residents, thank you for having us here tonight. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Vasquez mentioned, we have our PAC and our troop here tonight. Our PAC was helping with the Pledge of Allegiance. Our troop, uh, is here to support the PAC, and our troop is also working on the citizenship in the community merit badge, uh, as Mr., uh, Mr. Vasquez, uh, mentioned. So for those of you not familiar with the program, Scout, one of the goals of scouting is to develop leaders and active members of the community. And, um, they do this through, um, through activities. So we do volunteer work, and we also have a number of, we call merit badges and skills that we have to learn on diff, uh, a whole bunch of different aft, aspects. Could be citizenship, it could be athleticism, it could be first aid, it's just a, uh, a group of skills that we'd like, our Scouts to have to be better prepared, uh, for, for adulthood. Uh, so, so some of the requirements for the citizenship and community, uh, merit badge are to attend the council meeting and to pay attention and to listen to one of the topics that's being discussed and develop an opinion to discuss with their counselor. So that's what the Scouts are here, uh, to do tonight. Um, we'd like to thank you for having us and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Yes, absolutely.
Um, additionally, one of the reasons that they're here is that they're, would like to invite all of you, any of you that could participate to their November sixteenth meeting. Part of their requirement is to interview some of our government officials. I was able to reach Mr. Vasquez yesterday. Uh, we will be meeting on the sixteenth at seven o'clock in the evening. Any of you that would like to come out and join us, we would love to have you so that you could come out and the boys can interview you for the, for the-
Where would that be?
Right now, it looks like the optimist that we may change the location, we'll get back to Mr. Bass on the exact location.
If you would get with our city clerk Erica and let her know, and she can send out a meeting invite to all of us with the location, that would be great.
Thank you.
And well, thank you so much.
Before you said, is it possible to have the Scouts come up and take a picture?
Yes, of course. I thought we did that in the morning, uh, during the pledge, and we didn't. Thank you, Scouts, so much for being here. It's, we're really thrilled to have a big audience like you. We don't always have large audience at some of our meetings. But, um, I know right now you're looking at us and seeing us as your city leaders, and you know what? We're looking at you guys, and we're seeing our future leaders. Some of you right there that are sitting right there will probably be sitting in these seats or in other communities as council members in the coming years. So, um, thank you. Thank you for your service in the future for, um, for all the communities.
Through the chair, uh, just to mention, I, I, I think this is the first time I have ever seen a troop sit through an entire city council meeting, ever, ever. To your credit.
We're, um, we're, uh, interested in finding out of all our agenda items, which one tends to be the, uh, most interesting as a group to the Scout. So your troop lead, uh, Scout leaders will have to let us know later on. This one's get the-
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, uh, I, I, I plan to attend the meeting on the sixteenth. I hope some of you can attend, and I know they're going to be asking us questions. And for, for the record, my son interviewed our illustrious William Alonso when he was working on his merit badge. So thank, I, I thanked him before, but thank you, William, for making yourself available, when Victor was doing that.
And, and scouting is such, uh, a wonderful experience, and I have to put in the plug for Girl Scouts because I was just all the way through cadets when I was growing up. So, um, it's a wonderful experience to be growing up with a group of, of friends that are participating in it, but also, um, I want to echo what Councilman, um, Vasquez mentioned about it's the leaders, the leadership, you're, the time that you're putting in, um, to spend with these Scouts to, to just give them a broad experiences and the chance to, um, expose them to the outdoors, to civic events like this, and so, so many other things. Um, all the, the entire community owes you, um, a lot of thanks for that. So we appreciate it. Okay, so, um, the next agenda item is the approval of the council minutes.
Through the chair, motion to move six A.
All right, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Bass?
Aye.
Councilman Bahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Next agenda item is reports from boards and commissions, and we have none for tonight. Um, public hearings. We don't have any public hearing. So we move to the next agenda item, which is, uh, nine A.
This is a recommendation by the Police Department that council approve an expenditure to general sales administration. TA major police supplies utilizing the GSA contract number GS dash zero seven F dash zero one one five Y in an amount of ten thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars for a BOSS four level one license for one year, period at fifteen thirty-seven oh three per year and a one year of PIPs cloud hosting services at four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents per year and BOSS Mentis level two software for a year, make and model at, at four thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and one cents per year as funds were approved in the fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two budget pursuant to section thirty-one E five. as funds were approved in the fiscal year twenty one twenty two budget pursuant to section thirty one E five of the city code.
Through the chair, motion to move nine A.
I'll second that.
Second.
Okay, uh, we have a second. You, you got the second, Erica, because we had Councilwoman Bravo and Councilman Fahad. Okay. Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo, yes. Councilman Bass.
Hi.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Robson Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We go to agenda item ten, old business. We have none. Agenda item eleven, new business, uh, resolution A.
This is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida approving a memorandum of understanding with the Florida State Lodge Fraternal Order of Police relating to the police pension fund, providing for authorization, providing for an effective date. As discussed with council during our October twenty six twenty twenty one executive session with our labor attorney, Jim Crossland, the city and the fraternal order of police reached an agreement on a new contract back in October twenty fourteen that made significant changes to the police pension plan in order to reduce costs for both the city and the police officers. One of the changes involved a freeze on benefits that created a dual calculation of benefits where the first part of the calculation was the frozen accrued benefit as of October twelve twenty fourteen. And the second part involves the benefit based on members continuing service after that date. This created a situation where officers would actually get a benefit of less than seventy percent of average earnings of the best five years of the last ten years. I have also confirmed with our actuary that the pension plan is performing so well that eliminating this freeze will maintain our costs at approximately the current levels. It is recommended that the city eliminate this freeze for the thirteen affected officers. Since twenty fourteen, the city's costs as well as the officers' costs have decre- decreased significantly, which was the intent of both parties during those negotiations. A cash is a memorandum of understanding the city needs to execute along with the fraternal order of police as well as the next item eleven B, which is the pension ordinance needed to achieve this change. Staff recommends the council approve both, both items so that we can move forward.
Richard.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second to that, mayor.
Second. All right, any discussion?
Mayor, can I uh, just to, to move things along a little? Could, can I request that we just do A and B collectively so that?
Is that all right?
Thank you.
You're doing both together?
B is an ordinance for first reading.
Right, one, the first one's the A is the reso and B is the ordinance.
So we have to have them separate. All right, so let's do, um, I have a first and a second for um, item eleven A. Is there any other discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo, yes. Councilman Best.
Hi.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, eleven B.
This is an ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida amending section thirty five dash fifty three benefits, benefit amount and eligibility of the police enforcement pension plan of the city's quota ordinances pertaining to retirement benefits, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification and providing for an effective date.
Through the chair, motion to move eleven B.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo, yes. Councilman Bass.
Hi.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
This is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida authorizing the issuance of capital improvement and equipment acquisition revenue note series twenty twenty one of the city of Miami Springs, Florida in the principal amount of $645,000 for the purpose of financing the cost of construction or infrastructure improvements to the community center and the purchase of two side loader, single axle garbage sanitation trucks and a Ford F-150 for the Parks and Recreation Department, awarding the sale of the note to City National Bank of Florida, providing for security for the note, providing other provisions relating to the note, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, providing for adoption of representations, providing for certain other matters in connection therewith, providing a separability clause and providing for an effective date. This is uh, the note that was uh, at the last meeting. We approved the City National Bank's BCI for the six hundred and forty five thousand. And this is just to uh, approve uh, execution of the note documents. I have Lori here from Wyserota who's handling the closing of the loan.
Or is there anything you wanted to say? I know I just signed some documents right before the meeting.
Yeah, you had a, you, you've got a really great interest rate at one point five percent.
Yes.
And it's for a five-year period. So we have gotten all the documents signed ahead of time and we'll be sending them off to um, City National Bank of Florida. Um, so we'll be funding this debt on Friday.
Perfect.
Hey. You think maybe, uh, you think maybe we can bundle with some of the other stuff, some other debt we have with that one point five?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Like I said, at the next meeting, um, somebody's gonna look at this ten or fifteen years from now and they'll go, that must be a typo. A one point five interest rate, there's no way. Okay, is there, uh, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? So these are the three items. I know um, the truck for um, Public Works and then the truck for the Recreation Department, which was badly needed replacement. And then the improvements for the um, the community center of painting the outside ceiling and, and protecting the structure, right, William?
Yes.
Okay. No other discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo, yes. Councilman Bass.
Hi.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Now that we have the note in place, the next item uh, which Tammy will read is for the purchase of the two sanitation trucks.
Resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida approving the purchase of the two sanitation trucks from Nextron Corporation doing business as Nextran Truck Center in an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty seven thousand five hundred dollars utilizing the terms and conditions of the Florida Sheriff's Association's contract pursuant to section thirty one E five of the city code, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion?
Through the chair, motion to move eleven D.
Any discussion on that?
Um, yes, through the chair.
Yes.
William, what do we do with the old ones? They're still working, right? Are we gonna auction them?
They're still working, but uh, hopefully we'll.
Barely working, but those that are still functional, we will always auction them.
Auction them off. Yeah, thank you.
Do we do the auction ourselves, Tammy? Now that, that came up, or we give it to the county?
They are.
We hire an auctioning company. Once we have um, a, a good amount of items to auction.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, any other discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo, yes. Councilman Bass.
Hi.
Councilman Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve, other business, twelve A. So request um, by me to provide an update on the recent meetings with FDOT regarding the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street uh, corridor project. And as you may remember, um, this is something that um, FDOT advised us of this summer. They were having two public workshop meetings. Uh, one was at their Doral headquarters. It was, uh, you could attend personally or virtually. And another one was here at the uh, Holiday Inn over near Lejeune in Miami Springs. And uh, that was also the option for residents. There were public sessions for residents and um, uh, anyone from the community to attend virtually or in person. We heavily advertised uh, those meetings to let the residents encourage them to, to be there, to listen to the, um, the projects that are under study. Um, FDOT has told us that there, this is the study phase of these projects. Uh, one is what they call the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street Corridor, but there's another project that is called the Iron Triangle, which is um, relate, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to say why one ends and the other one starts, but I guess it's two different uh, project teams that are working on them. And the Iron Triangle involves um, substantial significant changes to um, the area of the corner, the intersection of Lejeune and Northwest Thirty Sixth Street and the one twelve expressway. Um, and that involves, um, they're looking at, they would like to extend the uh, westbound exit from the one twelve further into Miami Springs, which obviously um, the majority of us um, are against that. Um, the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street Corridor study is to expand Northwest Thirty Sixth Street by a variety of, of options so that it can accommodate more traffic, basically. I mean, that's what it comes down to, uh, more freight and more traffic. So at the public sessions that they had this summer, um, we strongly encouraged and advertised and let the public know, asking them to attend. Um, there were some residents that attended from Virginia Gardens and from um, from Miami Springs and, and some of our council also. We were there. Um, recently, FDOT reached out to me and wanted to meet with me to update me on um, and the city manager on the status of their study, how it's going so far. So this was not a public meeting. It was just, they wanted to update us and we met with them. We had two meetings, actually, last week. Um, William and I, and we were told that they're almost completing their study phase. They stressed again that the study is just looking at the three options that basically it comes down to three options. One would be no build, where they do nothing. They call it no build and they would leave it the way it is. The other one is a trans, transit system. I forget the acronym that they use, but basically it's um, tweaking the um, the um, what do you call it? The, the uh, lights and the um, allowing some vehicles to, some lanes to perhaps when the light turns green to go earlier and then some a little slower. So it's, it's just tweaking the um, the traffic signals to improve um, traffic. And realistically, it's freight to allow, the way I see it is to allow more freight to go on Thirty Sixth Street. And then the third option is um, pretty drastic. It uh, involves uh, the possibility of even an elevated guide, an elevated road over Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, um, similar to what is currently, if any of you have been to Northwest Twenty Fifth Street in Doral, um, or perhaps expanding the lanes than the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street lanes um, south a little more cutting into um, the airport area, but it's still, no matter what, it is, you know, Northwest Thirty Sixth Street would have additional lanes, additional traffic, accommodate additional traffic and uh, substantially impact our community. Um, I think for uh, detrimentally by significantly. So we voiced these concerns to, when William and I met with them, we voiced the similar concerns that were already voiced this summer by our residents. Um, they have told us that they're entering the P E and D, PD and E uh, phase um, in January. So they're going to have two public sessions. One will be on January twentieth and it'll be here at the Holiday Inn again on Lejeune. And then there will be another public session in March. It's really, really important for our community to be there and to give their opinion on this. Um, I, my personal opinion is it should be no build. Um, you know, we just can't accommodate increased traffic and increased freight on Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, which is really our, the heart of our city. It's the only way that um, that most of us can enter and exit Miami Springs. We're limited by the Miami River on the north, the whole, our north perimeter or uh, boundary is the Miami River. On the west, we have the Ludlum Canal. So we are bound in by two waterways, major waterways. And Northwest Thirty Sixth Street is really um, the only means that um, the majority of us utilize to get in and out of Miami Springs. So any uh, dramatic changes to that which would increase the amount of traffic on the streets would basically box us in and make it so that it'd be difficult for us to leave or enter Miami Springs and also for visitors and our, our business owners and everything else. So um, that is where we stand now. I'm providing you the information that was given to us. There will be two public sessions in January. They didn't want to have them in November or December because they said people are on vacation. It's a difficult time and they find that um, they, they're just not well attended. So uh, FDOT has been very, I would say, very professional, very transparent um, with us all along the way. The, the FDOT engineers, they are listening. They keep um, stressing that this is a job that's assigned to them. This is their job to look at it and look at the possibilities and they're, they are doing their job. Um, I think it's just very, very important that the community um, let them know about our concerns and, and be part of the final decision making that, that occurs. So um, we will, I think we've posted, William, on the website, on our city website, the information that was provided to us, which is basically the same information as this summer.
The information and uh, I was gonna mention that we also provided a phone number and emails that residents can uh, call or email their concerns between now and the public hearing. So that, that's also on our website.
And next week, uh, William and I are meeting with um, Senator Manny Diaz and Representative Brian Avila um, to, you know, let them know about the most recent meeting that we had and um, provide them um, input on our concerns. Since this is Florida Department of Transportation, um, we want to make sure as our state representative and state um, senator are aware of our concerns. And um, the other thing I would say is uh, something that we discussed at the meeting with FDOT recently was when the project gets into the PD and E, you know, how far along does this mean? And, and he's, he, uh, they let us know that uh, there was a project down south near Homestead, I believe, that was funded and everything, right, on Campbell. And because of the public um, outcry against it from the area, it was halted. So by no means does this mean that, you know, a, and, and again, I want to stress, FDOT is doing what they're supposed to do. They're hired to improve transportation throughout the, the state of Florida. So uh, they're doing their job. It's just really important that they hear from the community. We're not a warehouse area. There's other areas. Um, even where the Northwest uh, Twenty Fifth Street ramp is in Doral, um, if you look at that, those are warehouses around it. There's no, there are no residences there. There's no community there. That is very different, a very different location than Northwest Thirty Sixth Street with um, Virginia Gardens and Miami Springs. And the other thing we mentioned in, to them also is FDOT considers, it calls the whole project, the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street Project, which is from uh, the western end is eight twenty six expressway, Palmetto Expressway, all the way to uh, Biscayne Boulevard, basically, U, US one on the east. So they call that all the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street Project uh, corridor. It's a very different, and we stress this, the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street Corridor from Lejeune to uh, uh, the Palmetto Expressway, which is the western end, um, is a very different uh, corridor than on the east side of Lejeune. Um, westbound on the west end is Miami Springs and Virginia Gardens. These are residential communities. Uh, east of the um, Lejeune are warehouses and, you know, they wouldn't be impacted. So they can't really lump this together and want to increase. I, I, we find, and we explain that to them, that it doesn't make sense for them to be discussing this as one big corridor because it's apples and oranges, the types of communities that um, that Northwest Thirty Sixth Street um, passes through, same as I ninety five or any other expressway. You know, it, it can pass through a variety of communities. Um, so that is, William, is there, have I missed anything? On that? Okay.
Uh, through the chair, um, it, I, I'm really not surprised that these traffic engineers have gone through this route. I think you're gonna see this a lot more in the future relative to the fact that we are land poor and we can't spread. We can only go up. So I, especially with the areas that are impacted, such as Miami Beach and areas along going down, you know, south, southeastern uh, Dade County, um, where the intrusion of water, the water levels are, are rising, as we're all aware. And you're gonna see a lot more of this down the road from these engineers in terms of double decking with, with, with stuff. So, but the problem with them doing it here is it'll be of no benefit to Miami Springs. You're not gonna have people coming here as a destination. It's all cut through.
Well, and it's not just no benefit. It's, and we've stressed this, um, there, any increase in traffic would be increased emissions, carbon dioxide emissions.
All do both.
And noise pollution. And so that increases the, the negative environmental impact to our community. Emissions go up in the air and then they settle. So they'll settle over our, you know, into our breathing zone and noise pollution. Um, that's a given with more traffic. So those are big considerations in addition to the traffic and um, uh, and, and the other thing too, and I should mention, they asked, you know, well, what other way would there be to go east and west? And I feel very strongly and I've told them this, um, that logical choice for increasing traffic east and west is eight thirty six expressway. The eight thirty six expressway on the south side of the airport, there's plenty of room there to expand, um, to either expand um, south with more lanes or to build the double decker and you wouldn't impact any communities. To either expand south with more lanes or to build the double decker and you wouldn't impact any communities.
Then they're going to run into sweetwater problems, West Miami problems and Westchester is it down there?
Well, no, but this is from the Palmetto heading east. So, right. So, and they can from, oh, the, the other part of this is to accommodate cargo from. The Miami Airport area, which is just as easy to direct it south and get on eight thirty six and increase. The lanes there, the, the, you know, the ability to handle more traffic south of the airport. As it is to handle it north. And the other issue too is they've allowed exponential growth in Doral. Without providing for infrastructure and there's a lot of freight going in and out of Doral, a lot of traffic going in and out of there. And, you know, they allowed the county. Allowed that without providing for the infrastructure and now they want to provide. More passage east and west, which is fine, but it can't be through our living room. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to add that. If, if you haven't done so, go on, go on Northwest Twenty Fifth Street underneath. That bridge and you could see how dirty it is. That's what Northwest Thirty Sixth Street would look like with the, with the exhaust and all of that. Trust me, I support transportation. I mean, that's where we get our food. You know, trucks is where most of the food gets to in and around this country off the ships. So it's vital that we have the transportation, mobility, the highways necessary and so forth. But when, when it, when you talk about traversing a residential area. Those of you who have been here a long time will know what happened when I ninety five was built to communities on each side of that. So. So yes, I support transportation. I think the mayor's observation is an excellent one in terms of eight thirty six. Eight twenty six, there are already connectors there and so forth. I'm not sure about what happens further west, but eight thirty six does go all the way west. And there's plenty of room on each side of that for, for to take care of those needs. I'm not a civil engineer, so I can't talk to that. I used to want to be a civil engineer, but I'm not. So it's important that you all recognize we need to be there when they have these public hearings. Need to make sure we show up. We will have reminders. Shannon will make sure that you get all the notices and all of that so. That our voices are heard.
Thank you, Councilman. Any want to add anything else? That's just the latest update. Will mark January twentieth on your calendar. They've already, we offered to them that they could have the public session here. At our Rebecca Sosa Theater or at our senior center, but they were already, they checked on it and then they came back and they said they were already committed. To the location at Holiday Inn.
Through the chair, what time was that?
I don't know if they gave us the time. It's in the evening, but it'll be on our website when they give us the information. We'll be posting it. And then again, in March, I'm not sure that there was an exact date for the March one, the follow up, but there, there are two sessions. Okay, um, so again, I want to ask the stress to the community. This is a really important part. If they just hear from a few of us. You know, the project's going to go through. It's really important that they hear from our community that the, the impact. That, that something like this, something of, of this dramatic nature would. Would result on our community. Okay, so the next agenda item is a request by Vice Mayor Bravo to discuss parking comprehension plan for the city of Miami Springs.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I approached William because I think it's very important for us to have. Some sort of comprehension plan for parking, considering that we cannot control what's going to happen outside of Miami Springs. The city will continue to grow. Outside of our boundaries. So we're, we are, when we are in other, we're going to feel some sort of, some sort of impacts. So. I wanted to bring this up because I do know that we do not have a parking comprehension plan. So I wanted to see if I can get consensus from council. So we can go ahead and direct our administration to put this study in place. I think our city needs it. We have a lot of traffic coming in and out. We have a lot of developments that are happening and they're probably not. Going to, to stop anytime soon. I mean, we have our downtown Miami Springs. That's, that's coming up and it's coming up hot. And we need some sort of. Plan so that we can go ahead and compensate for the impact that the city is going to have. I understand that we have codes in place for where you can park, where you cannot park, but I think our city is going into a direction that our. Code is not going to be able to sustain us. Also, our city needs some revenue. Our city needs revenue. I know a lot of cities, small and big, they're retaining a lot of revenue through, through paid parking. I'm not saying to do paid parking everywhere. I'm saying to do maybe perhaps consider paid parking in our hotspots where we have high traffic. This can help, you know, promote better traffic flow, generate revenue, solve parking and traffic problems. Improve parking availability because some of these owner, I mean, some of these businesses, either we don't have parking most of the time. I mean, I don't know what's going on so much with the businesses. We have a couple of businesses here, but if we really want to have the city. Progress and grow and have business owners attracted to our city, we need to have some sort of balance. Enough parking, enough flow, enough, you know, enough exposure. And I think if we have very little parking spots or in. Parking spots where people are just leaving their cars there around the clock or, or whatever the case may be. I think we need some sort of. Parking plan in place because it's going to get, it's going to get worse. We have the downtown building coming up. We have the, the triangle building. I think that there's the one across the street. I don't know what it's called. Coming out to Hialeah on the right hand side that was a gold gym. There's going to be something I think coming up in the works. And if it's not in the works, it's gonna, it's gonna come. So I rather, I want to be proactive instead of reactive. Because logistically, I think our city needs it and it will alleviate a lot of issues too. I know that we have, we can, you know, pay for parking on the phone. And then when you put in your, your tag. It can. It can identify somebody that maybe hasn't paid their fees or fines in, in respect to traffic citations. So it kind of helps police as well. Um, which I thought it was a, a pretty cool thing there. So the first thing would be to have a parking comprehension plan. And then the second part would be to put a. A pricing guideline in place. So I provided three attachments on today's agenda. One of the ones was reflecting, just so you can have a general idea of the breakdown of the Coral Gables Downtown Parking Map. They have. I mean, you can't compare Coral Gables to us, but it's just, just to have an idea of, you know, how their rates are, how they're charging. Their method of, of processes when it comes to having these parking garages. I think maybe having maybe one central location for parking. I don't know, but I would really love to see. Where our deficit is in parking, where we can use parking, what areas we're not using. It's just a whole big study. I attached here the North Beach Regional Parking Analysis. It was done by Walker Consultants. I don't know who they are. I just see that their logo is here and on this report. I just wanted to give you guys a visual. So that you guys can see what the study is about. It gives you an executive summary, the current conditions of the city, the party, the parking adequacy. Future conditions, loss of inventory. I mean, it goes on and on and on. Alone Coral Gables, again, it's just an example. I was able to get their, their revenue budget for two, twenty, 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 twenty one. And their revenue just on not even rentals and concessions because that's a whole different thing, but on parking alone. This last year, because I guess due to COVID and people are not, you know, moving as much was over six million dollars. So I think if we want to improve our city's. Traffic flow and maybe some people were like, hey, you know, I don't want to pay that. And so, hey, you know, they just don't come to our city. But we need to, we need to balance out. This, this can also help with reducing taxes. Property taxes because we can offset, offset now and have another source of big revenue generated into a city. Where it can halt our property taxes as well. So it's kind of like a win-win. Me as a resident, I'd rather pay, I don't know. A hundred bucks for the year. I'm just throwing a number out there, but I save maybe in the next year or two, I save five hundred, a thousand dollars. Every year or every other year, my property taxes, you never know. But I definitely wanted to see where, what our city needs because we could only help our city with, with looking into an analysis of, of what there is. And I know that the city. As of today, has never had one. So I'm curious to see with all the developments coming through, through Miami Springs. And see what these professionals have to say about our city and how it works now.
Councilwoman, could I say something? Sure. I, I think that you're bringing up a lot of, you know, ideas that we really need to look at and they're. At the, at Thursday's Business and Economic Development Task Force. I know Councilman Best was there with me. Parking keeps coming up. It's different. The issue is there's not parking available. And that the city needs to provide more public parking and. You know, they, they've brought up a lot of issues and they're telling us that we have a parking problem in that we don't have parking available right in front of businesses. And we need to look at that. So, and I know William and I have talked since the meeting. A lot of the recommendations that the Business and Economic Development Task Force, a newly created one. We asked them to provide a report within a year. But some of the issues that they're bringing up, we don't need to wait a year for them. We can address them now as they get, you know, several of. The issues that they've been bringing up, we can start working on them now. And one of them was. The parking, some residents, some business owners say that they park. In front of their businesses because there's nowhere else for them to park. So they wind up taking parking spaces that should be available. For their guests and William's going to look at some possibilities of opening up some. Perhaps there's some areas that we can open up some parking spaces so that. Business owners, employees, even in our city employees, you know, that they're not taking up parking spaces in front. But what I wanted to say is these are really good ideas. I think it deserves a lot more time. Than sitting here at the council meeting. I'd like to suggest a workshop on parking. That we all sit together, that we discuss these issues in more detail. Because I don't think that we can really get to the crux of this. In, you know, at a council meeting.
Through the chair, if I might, Mayor. Vice Mayor, thank you for bringing this up. This is, this is something that we should have been discussing up here. Over the last three years, to be perfectly honest with you. So thank you for bringing that up. I'll give you that. I, I know that over the years we have, this has come up before, obviously. But the trouble is people in this, it got shut down like a. You know, like a lead balloon. People in this town are not going to pay to park. They're just not gonna, period. It's, you know, you, you think there's a lot of people in chambers right now? Put this on the, put the, put this on the docket. And it'll be downstairs again like they were a couple of months ago. They just don't want it. In addition, the most viable thing that I've heard to date. Was brought up by the administration some time ago. And it was the, across the street from the police and firehouse, that parking lot over there. We have had some discussion over the years about building a double tier parking garage in there. We have a lot of parking in Miami Springs, believe it or not. If you want to go somewhere, you're going to be able to find a place to park. You might not be able to park right in front of the building, the, the business that you want to go to. That's an inconvenience. That's that we don't have parking. But. The trouble with the double tier parking garage is you're, okay, now you're centralized in there, right? Are, are people going to go shopping at Mylams and park in a parking garage by City Hall? I don't think so. So. You know, we're, we're really not, and, and, and the example you brought up about Coral Gables was, was interesting. Because Coral Gables is nothing more than business after business, after business, after business. If you go to Coral Gables and have to park a, a football field away from a place you're going, you're not inconvenienced. That's how it is. You know, it's six million dollars. I appreciate, I appreciate your research on that too. But I was thinking about that when I saw the, the item come up during the week. And I says, I wonder if she's going to do the research on how much Coral Gables garners in revenue for, and you did. Hats off to you.
And I think one of the problems we have is we have a lot of business, empty businesses, which is why we created the task force to help us figure out how to. Bring, attract businesses to Miami Springs and how to assist the businesses that are here from staying, you know, to make sure that they stay. It breaks my heart every time I see a, a business that's been here for a few years have to close its doors and now it keeps happening. But. What we're hearing is that parking is an issue. So, you know, there's, it's hard to know. And that's why I'd like to suggest a workshop. I think that all of us. Digest, to talk about the issues that you've brought up, to discuss other issues. And it just, parking is a big. Issue in Miami Springs. There's a lot of aspects to it. There's a lot of areas throughout Miami Springs. So working together on that, I believe would be a better. Way for us to.
Mayor, do we want to do this like before the holidays?
It's.
If you want to, I'm, I'm all in, but let's do it before the eighteenth.
Everyone in agreement and having a workshop to discuss parking, a parking workshop so we can.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Bravo's items in more detail and also discuss.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I don't know. I mean, the workshop is great. I just don't know. I mean, this is not my profession to do this. I wouldn't even be able to start coming up with ideas. But again, we have events here in Miami Springs that we invite people outside of Miami Springs and maybe we're limited because we don't have parking. So our events are not. They're not thriving as much as they could. And this is really more for planning for the future. So as far as going to Mylams, Mylams parking is going to be free because it's Mylams parking lot.
Yeah, but that's not fair what they're doing to Mylam either. As, as Max said at the meeting the other night. People are parking in their lot and going shopping and taking spaces from people that go, they're going there to shop for groceries. That's not fair. And he pays, and he pays his, he pays his weight.
So I think it's important. This is more something to plan for the future and not waiting for the problem to happen because we're, we're growing. But I think that's, that's why. The workshop is something that we can look into it to plan for it instead of. It, it, it really is something that, and like Councilman Best said. We keep kicking the can on this, on parking and we, you know, we say there's not a problem. But if people are telling us there's a problem, which is what we said it, if. That some of the people on the task force are telling us that parking is an issue, then it is a problem. It doesn't matter if, if, you know, if we don't feel it is. It's at least something that merits are looking into in more detail.
You know, a classic example, Mayor, if, if I might add to your statement, where people say there's no parking in Miami Springs. Remember, remember, remember the River Cities Festival? We haven't had one in a couple of years. Hopefully we're going to have one this year. It's a lot of people and those people aren't all from Miami Springs. Trust me. Guess what? They find a place to park, don't they? Oh, yeah.
Councilman Best question.
Yeah, I. Thank you, Councilwoman Bravo for raising the issue about parking. It's a, it's a never ending story as far as I'm concerned. I'm, I'm not sure yet if the concept of a workshop is the one we should use right now. And, and here's why I'm saying this. We've tasked a group of people and including Captain Neha Perro, who's here tonight to. To review our business and economic development processes. Which really talks about areas in the city where the parking is the issue, right? So parking is not an issue on my block. I don't think it's an issue on your block. It's the, it's the parking in the. Business areas, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. And, and so I think that. And I, and I could not make the meeting on Thursday, so I had to ask Captain, I think he read it into the minutes. They, they had on the agenda last, last week, and the two of you were there to do a survey of business owners. Right? That was on the agenda. And so I suggested that, and I'm going to try to go to the next meeting. That there'll also be a survey about. What are the residents of Miami Springs? Consumption practices. What businesses do we frequent? How often? What time of day? And where do we park? Right? So that's part of the, the, the conversation because I think it's the, the issues raised by, by Councilwoman Bravo. Excellent. They all have to do with the same areas. And I'd like to try to find a way that we could combine these efforts so that we're not, you know. You know, take advantage of the fact that we're doing, we're doing this effort. And I think that, you know, looking at, you know, Coral Gables and other places, Coral Gables is a place that attracts a lot of people. For a lot of different reasons. And so, you know, I think they, they're doing very well with their parking and able to raise six million dollars. And, and sure, it'd be nice if we could raise a million dollars, but you know, at what cost? You know, the words, what, what, what are we going to do to be able to have that? So I think that if we do have a workshop, then it's maybe to think through more comprehensively. How to approach the problem as opposed to how we're going to fix the problem. Because I think that parking has, in Miami Springs, has lots of legs and, and components. And I don't want to step on the work that the, uh, Business and Economic Development folks are doing. Because this is something that they have already talked about. And maybe we might want to do something with them. I'm not sure that's the, the proper way, but I'm, I'm trying to, in my mind, a workshop. The definition of it is to do something, right? Constructive.
I think what I meant by workshop is for us to discuss parking exclusively because parking is, and I, I think doing it at a council meeting, there's just too many details. Questions that we'd like to ask. So, and, and I do want to say by all means, we have, you know, we've asked these professionals, these very, very.
So just to finish the thought on that, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If we're going to do something for council focused on parking, then let's bring in some of the other folks who are working on this issue as well. To, to, you know, to make sure that it's on their agenda, right? In terms of what are we looking at, generally speaking, solutions? So that it goes to, you know, we get all the folks at the table.
One of the, one of the
Focus on parking.
Right.
Just on parking.
Councilman, one of the, one of the things that we discussed or that the, the, the board discussed the other night was how do you figure out what needs to be where and, you know, and, and of course I mentioned about the Max Mylum thing a minute ago, which isn't fair to him or, or, or his, or a store, that people just, just jump in there and do it. But going on the mayor's recommendation for a workshop, I applaud that. But I think maybe what we want to include there is to tap two or three of these, 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 these study groups that are professionals that are hired to go through this stuff and have two or three of them here and at least hear what they have to say. Now, we did bring up at the meeting the other night about the Dover Coal Report. Some of you may remember that back in the day. The Cardini, the traffic study that was done and the Lamb report that was also done. I suggested the other night that, that the city dust those off and, and provide each member of the board a copy of each of those studies. But if we're going to have a workshop, which I, which I applaud you for bringing up, I think we ought to have somebody here that can kind of lead us. And, and then we can make a decision on if, if in fact we ended up hiring one of them even.
Well, and Councilman, I think I need to, I guess, bring up something for consideration. Right now we are, we're having a major construction project here. So personally, I would not recommend that we act on anything until we find out the, the result. You know, there's, I mean, we know what we anticipate, but the reality is what we anticipate may be very different from what really happens with parking along Canal Street. And, and so any major expense that we do or any comprehensive parking study would have to be, I feel, to be responsible on our part would be after that's in place and we know exactly what we have.
To do this properly, we're two years out. We're certainly not shovel ready.
I think they're going to be finished. They, they plan to be finished in fall of twenty twenty-two.
September of twenty-two.
Twenty-two. So that is very important. And also of course, the recommendations from the Business and Economic Development Task Force, whatever recommendations they give us, which is parking is one small part of what their task is. Their task is to tell us what sorts of businesses we should attract to Miami Springs. And also how we can help our existing businesses thrive. And parking, the last two meetings have kind of taken that over, but hopefully they will move on to, you know, the, the, the major issues. I'm not saying parking isn't a major issue, but the many, very many other issues that are on their plate. What I envision with the, the workshop is so that we're all kind of on the same page about the city's parking. There are some things, and I alluded to those of the low hanging fruit that we can correct now. Our, our signage for parking is abysmal. It's, and I've been looking at it and we have public parking in some, they're big. And then summers like Miami Springs and it's tiny one, you can't read it. And it's labeled in some places and like what was brought up to me recently is even on Canal Street, we have one sign that says public parking. And all of these rows of, of public parking. And if you didn't know, you'd go there and you go, does it mean I can, public parking is these, these three right here? Or does it really mean all of, and those are things that we probably take for granted and we just know. But looking at it from, you know, like if an alien landed here and started to look at these things and, and, and we can start correcting those things now. These are things that we can beef up. So what I envision with the workshop is just to give us time to get more information about our current situation, discuss kind of a plan of action going forward. Once this major construction is built, once we get the recommendations from the Business and Economic Development Task Force, but that we're all on a pretty, and also that things that we can correct now that we start doing. Like looking at alternatives for, you know, business owners and their staff and even city staff so that they're not parking right in front of of City Hall, taking up spaces if, or in front of, you know, the business because there's nowhere else to, for them to park. And they don't have parking for their customers. And, and there's a few places that we're looking at that may be options for these people that need to park for eight hours a day to walk an extra block or two. So again, I just think a workshop would be a better way for us to all be on the same page and get information. Look further into the recommendations that you're opposing Vice Mayor. And also some of the recommendations that the city in the past years ago has paid for. That kind of went nowhere. They.
I, I think, Mayor, what's happened in the last year or so, and that's why you do a lot of people say there's parking issues. First of all, Canal Street, the construction that's going on at one Curtis Parkway. On average, you have thirty to forty construction workers that park their vehicles on Canal Street. We've got them now doing it from Dakota West. So you look, you have those people that are parking there, aside from the people that are working at the Barry's Cleaning location. You also have the section of Canal Street from Curtis to Hook Square. That's not being used now because that's part of the construction site. When that project is finished, that area from Curtis to Hook Square will bring in thirty-five parking spaces. There's sixteen on the south side and nineteen on the north side. Those are thirty-five that are not there now, aside from the hundred and twenty-four car garage that they're building in the facility. So I think that combination has caused the people to say, well, no, we have, we have a parking issue. But really, like I was talking to the mayor, our parking issue downtown is really Monday to Friday during the lunch hours. If you go by there in the mornings, late in the afternoon or on weekends, you can park anywhere. There's parking all over the place.
But, but we do need to be consistent and, or anyone that comes into Miami Springs should be able to quickly identify where the public parking is. Should be consistent in signage, should be attractive. That was brought up at the Business and Economic Development Task Force too, that a lot of our public spaces, you know, just the lots aren't very attractive. I mean, there, there's, you know, we can spiff them up a little bit. And that's why these kinds of things we can do now. We don't need to wait to see what the impact is of the new building. What the impact is when the construction workers leave. Spending, doing any kind of study right now of that is irresponsible and unreliable because obviously we're in a big mix. That's not to say that it's not something that we should do once things are, you know, relatively settled. So.
One of the, Mayor, one of the aspects of the Dover Coal Report, and I'm sure you've read it over the years, was to convert Westward Drive into one lane each way and do diagonal parking versus linear. You would gain, what was it, thirty-two percent more parking? I think it was based on the report. So that's a, that's an aspect. I mean, look, we're, we're chopping South Royal to one lane each way. And there's no, there's no need to park on South Royal, right? So something to make sense. I mean, why would we not pursue that?
Yeah. Through the chair to piggy, to piggyback on, on what you said. When that building is set and done, where you have the one hundred and twenty-four parking spaces and people are living in there, they're going to have visitors. So I want to know where they're going to park. I just, it's just planning accordingly.
You know, we should all be prepared now, have a really good idea foundation. So that, you know, as this next year, as we get into it and, and we start seeing the reality of what we've got. What we're going to wind up with, we can deal with that.
No, I think we
Councilman, Councilman.
Thank you. Yeah. So I appreciate the Vice Mayor and, and, and the work that she did in, in bringing this up. Actually, I, I haven't been to any of the economic development meetings, but I'm glad that they're talking about it. Because when we had our goal meeting, I brought up the issue of, of parking and having a, a, some type of parking garage. We had talked about the area where behind the post office where we have some city vehicles. And there were, we even mentioned how there's some kind of grant money or some kind of funding available if certain aspects of that parking garage were to, for, for police or first responders. So when we brought it up, and I believe that was back in August, I think we talked about like, well, do we really have a problem? So I'm glad that the business owners are talking about that there's a problem. I think there's an aspect of this that's chicken and egg of like, you know, because some people feel like, well, if you bring the businesses, then we'll need the parking and then we'll take care of the parking. But I think that the business people will tell you that if you don't have the parking, you're not going to be able to have the businesses, then you won't be attracting anybody. So I think it is important. I, I think you're absolutely right, Mayor, that we need to wait until we see what the impact of the triangle retail space and the fifty-five units that are going to be coming online in September before we do anything in terms of like paying a consulting firm to do a, a study. I'm glad that we're all kind of paddling in the same direction in terms of our understanding that we probably need to look further into this because that was the whole point that I was trying to bring up when we were talking about the goals in the, in the city. But I think that the Economic Development Board, they, I would have to think that that would be one of the biggest issues that they have. Because it's not even so much about, to your point, right? About that there are some things that maybe we need to think about now. It's not about number of spaces. I wouldn't want my wife to park, you know, behind where Bodies by Marty is back there and have to walk through some foreboding dark parking, you know, space to, to get somewhere like I, and I, again, it's chicken and egg. Do we have a lot of businesses? I mean, this isn't Miracle Mile right now. Do you make it Miracle Mile and then you need the parking or do you provide the parking so that you attract people? I know that, you know, when you were trying to dine at like Junior's, who's no longer going to be there. You'd have to park in the bank parking lot. And so kind of to the point that Councilman Vasquez said, this thing has a lot of legs. I wouldn't feel comfortable doing a workshop unless we had input beyond what we kind of were talking about. But I do feel we need to wait in terms of paying a consulting firm until we, we have kind of the big projects online. But I, I don't think that I, I kind of agree with Councilman Vasquez. I, I think that the Economic Development Board would not have a problem with coming up with, you know, give us some bullets. What are the ten biggest parking issues you have? And what are your ten biggest ideas in terms of parking? And let's, let's have them because they're, I'm glad that they're speaking up because that's kind of like, I think, and when you talk to residents, like some people will tell you like, how do they not see that there's a huge parking issue? And, and, you know, I think that, that if it's just us coming in for a workshop, not that staff wouldn't, you know, kind of help us with some big ideas. I think that we need, we need to leverage the fact that we have the Economic Development Board. And, and I think that parking is probably a huge issue that keeps coming up with them. Because when you think of businesses and how you're going to have them down there, I think parking is the, the biggest obstacle. I think that maybe they could do some kind of like sub-report or just a, a list of bullets and just give, give us some ideas so that we can start wrapping our mind around this while we posture ourselves to do something. And I think that Councilman Best had a good idea. We've already paid consulting firms to, to look at some of these ideas. I think that the Economic Development Task Force should look at that and then come up with their recommendations for us. And we don't have to wait until the calendar year is over. I think that they should provide us with, with kind of the things to talk about in a task force. And in which case then I'd be all for doing it. But I, I do appreciate the Vice Mayor bringing it up. And I think that we should hold off on, on paying a consulting firm until we've, we've reviewed what other firms have said. And also, you know, wait until we have the big projects done that will give us a better idea of what our reality going forward is going to be.
Through the chair, Councilman Fehet, I, I was not suggesting that we hire a consulting firm. I was suggesting, right, I was suggesting that if we pursue the workshop idea, which the mayor proffered, that we invite maybe two or three specialist firms that, that do nothing but this. And just have them come and give us a little presentation. We're not going to pay them. But I, that, I think that would enhance what we, what we would be, would, would accomplish at a meeting like that. And the other important thing is, and it was just mentioned a minute ago, I forgot who said it, but that we're on the same page. That's very important. It's very important, all five of us.
Yeah. I think to the Vice Mayor's point, it, they could come in and do a study. And what better time to do it than after we've had, you know, fifty-five new units that have been completed? And we see what the impact of that is going to be, having somebody really get a sense of what, you know, giving us some real ideas professionally, kind of with the fresh eyes. And I think that there's a value to that.
Through the chair. Um, so in reviewing and reading these studies, whatever firm in the future we do hire, they would sit with our city manager and pile up all of the developments that we have coming forward and what we're expected to develop in the account for that into their study. So any permits, anything that's been open, you know, the architect, what's expected there, what, whatever it is that's developing, they take that into consideration with their study.
And, and we are, you know, with, when this project was approved, that was taken into effect, you know, of what the plans were. That was, and in fact, they had their engineering, they were required to tell us this is how we think it will impact the city. So that was kind of already done before the project was approved. But that doesn't mean that's really what's going to happen, no matter what is anticipated. In reality, we all know that it's, you know, the, the, it's the best plan, best analysis that you can provide, but then reality happens then. So I think it, it's really important. I mean, it has to be something that we wait and see in reality to see what'll happen.
Consulting you hire, the first thing he's going to want to know is, okay, one Curtis Parkway, the first floor retail. What businesses are in there?
Yep. We don't know yet.
Barry's Cleaning.
We don't know that either.
We don't know what's going in there.
Right. But so let's do this. Councilman Best brought up a very good point. And in fact, at the Business and Economic Development Task Force on Thursday, he had asked that they be provided with the past reports, several that have been done over the years.
Three of them.
Years before, because it hasn't been anything, I know since I've been on the council that, that has been done. So these were before projects that the city paid for and then didn't do anything with them. Basically, I guess because of the cost and also some of the things were so
Well, you know,
you know, removing the trees on Westward Drive.
There's still, there's, there's still something.
Something that the residents were, you know, just totally against my understanding.
And these things are timeless. I mean, they're, you know, Miami Springs is timeless in a way, if you think about it.
But we should have those reports also.
We should, we should also
Brought up a good point that we should all, all the
Myra knows this, we brought it up.
Should get those reports. And I think there were two or three.
Fascinating, fascinating.
After the first meeting of the business board, they asked for all those reports. We sent them, the, all of them, the Dover Coal Report.
Yes.
I believe I copied all of you.
And the Lamb one and the Carndino Traffic Study.
Those were all sent to them after the first meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can look at those. If, well, you can leave the workshop for us. I was just offering that as, because I don't feel that that's the kind of thing, you know, the information that you're providing that we do it service to discuss it here at a city council meeting. I, by no means, we don't have to have the workshop now. But I think parking is something that if we're going to really delve into it, we need to devote time to it because it is at the crux of, you know, of, of a lot of the business issues in Miami Springs.
My, I don't want to call it resistance to having a workshop, but it has to, I think the discussion, and we can do this when we meet and have our session, think tank, whatever you want to call it, that it's, it's, parking is an important part of overall plan, right? In other words, we've got folks talking about businesses and economic development. And we're talking about the, the center, center town, town center area. But we've got other, we've got Northwest Thirty-Six Street. We've got some other parking elements of this. So I, I appreciate Vice Mayor.
Why don't, why don't we?
And in the meantime, we're
To your, to your recommendation, Mayor, why don't we, why don't we give the council a little time to digest those three reports and then, and then bring your, because I, I, I think the workshop is going to, would be a valuable experience for us. But let's get a little educated in terms of what people are thinking that are the pros from Dover, you know? And that they've done studies on this that we, that the city's paid for.
Right. I think it's, and like Councilman Fehet said, it's time that, you know, that we start looking at this and, and finding, you know, ways to resolve it. And again, we're doing what we can from the Business and Economic Development Task Force. They're bringing up those meetings are just so excellent. They're short, they're condensed and there's so much valuable. They're short, they're condensed, and there's so much valuable information that they're just bringing out that, um, the things that we can correct now, we're doing them, you know, uh, anything. I mean, obviously, anything that's very costly and, and, you know, would have to come before the council, but, you know, um, making our, our parking areas more attractive, making sure that the signage is consistent, making sure that we have adequate signage so that no one's guessing, you know, is it okay if I park here? Am I gonna get towed away? Um, making sure that people who, um, have businesses have somewhere else to park, so they're not taking up spaces that are in front of the, um, in front of their businesses. Um, these are all things that were brought up by the task force and obviously, we can deal with that now. Um. Yes, yes, yes.
I think some of them were doing their homework during the meeting.
Thank you again. Thank you for having them here. Um, okay, so are we in agreement then? Will, um, wait and you brought up some very important issues, Vice Mayor, and we'll, um, look at the, the studies that were given to us and then down the road, if we want to have a workshop, we'll schedule one. Um, but any major, I think we're all in agreement that any major expenses, any major work on parking has to wait till the completion of these projects and we see.
Yes.
We find out what we have, um, and also the input from the Business and Economic Development Task Force as to, um, the recommendations of these very valued, um, members. Okay.
Perfect.
Um, all right, so, uh, we move on to reports and recommendations. Um, City Attorney?
No business to report.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Yes, uh, first of all, I want to wish everyone, uh, Happy Thanksgiving. We won't meet again until, I believe, December thirteenth. So I wanted to wish everyone at home and here, uh, Happy Thanksgiving to you and your families. Um, and just remember on, uh, November twenty-third, uh, we're going to have a food drive at the community center courtesy of, uh, Representative Avala's office and Commissioner Sosa. Uh, and that's, uh, November twenty-third, two, is it a day or two before Thanksgiving?
It's Tuesday.
And, uh, you have any other event?
From nine to noon at the community center. I just wanted to remind everybody, the, uh, Ecology Board meeting, um, is gonna be at the council chamber, six P M. on Tuesday, November ninth. Veterans Day ceremony on, um, at the War Memorial on Curtis Parkway is gonna be on Thursday, November eleventh at nine A M. Uh, we're gonna have our twelfth annual Turkey Trot Five K Run, uh, slash Walk at seven A M. starting on Saturday, November twentieth. Don't forget, uh, pre-registration is required. The holiday tree lighting ceremony will happen this year, um, a weekend earlier than normal. Uh, it's November twenty-eighth at six P M. Like, uh, bracelets are required. And then also we have our, uh, sorry, not required. Um, and then, um, Christmas at the gazebo, Saturday, December fourth, the twenty, um, sorry, December fourth, uh, the parade will be picked up at five forty-five P M. And the festive, the ease of, um, at the gazebo will begin, uh, from six to nine P M. And, uh, there are bracelets required for that, and they already are on sale for, um, residents.
And there will be snow this year. There will be snow. Okay.
Will there be ice?
Thank you, Tammy. Um, Vice Mayor?
Um, I just wanted to thank everyone for a productive meeting. Um, Happy Thanksgiving. If I don't see you within the streets before then, um, that's basically it. I look forward to, uh, many more meetings, I guess. I have nothing else to report, but thank you, and I, I look forward to the workshop. Um, maybe we can tackle that in the new, in the, in the new year. I mean, it's, it's not a rush right now, so we'll look into that. So thank you, thank every, thank you, everybody.
Councilman Best?
I'd like to thank the Vice Mayor for, uh, bringing up her items, uh, B and C, twelve B and C tonight. Um, I think it's something that, uh, that, that we need to, uh, not just think about, but really start brainstorming down the road. And I think we made some inroads in that tonight, and I thank you for initiating it, because you did. And other than that, I think we should make people trot at the Turkey Trot, not walk, trot. That should be, that should be a, uh, that should be mandatory, but, uh, in other than that, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Have a good one. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Fadhead?
Uh, just wanted to, uh, shout out the, uh, the city manager, William and his staff for removing the freeze on the police pension. Uh, I think that we, when we had our executive session, that's, uh, I had mentioned that's something that I had heard from, from several officers who were being affected. Uh, and I think it's a credit to the city that, that, uh, you know, they, the city heard about it, saw that it was something that was an unintended consequence, because when they signed, uh, back in two thousand fourteen, it was to kinda save money on both sides. Um, but this was an unintended consequence. And the city did right by those officers that were being affected, uh, because of that freeze. Uh, so it's, uh, definitely a win-win. And, uh, again, it's a credit to William.
Uh, Councilman Vasquez?
Uh, first of all, uh, Vice Mayor, ditto to what Bob Best said. That's, I don't wanna repeat that, so I appreciate that. So a couple of, well, report back on the, uh, you all remember, uh, the, uh, the Puerto Rican Professional Association, we did the presentation here. Um, I spent some time with them at the golf tournament and the weather was great. Um, and, uh, they're very appreciative. Uh, they enjoy themselves. They had over a hundred fifty people, ten, hundred forty-four players. And, uh, I also got to meet with Paul Odell, whom we were trying to set up a, a, a meeting so he could drive me through the, the whole golf course, right, to see it. And what a wonderful, what a wonderful course it is. I don't know anything about golf, but I mean, in terms of the way it's laid out. And, and we had a number of conversations, Paul and I, about the, you know, the work that's gonna be done there next year, what are the changes that are gonna be made? It's really amazing, over two hundred acres of land and a beautiful site. I'm gonna thank Paul and, uh, and William for, uh, uh, hosting this group. Paul said that this group was one of the best groups he's ever worked with in terms of their organization, in terms of the pre-registration, all of those things went off without a hitch. And I said, I can't promise, but I hope if you guys come back next year, next fall, you might be playing in an even better, um, um, uh, rounds, um, you know, if we can get these things done. I wanna raise, and I don't wanna delve too much in this, but, uh, you know, it's been in the news over the last couple of weeks about the, the mural on Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street and all these discussions. And I happened to be here at the compliance meeting on, um, on, uh, uh, last Tuesday. Um, what I wanna just point out on this is, um, and it has to do with the colors on the palette, right, which seems to be the, the point, that's point of contention, because I think the city retracted some of the other things they said. That was the, that was the major thing. And, uh, so, um, it, it just made me think about signage, right? And, and, and the things that we need to tackle when we move forward, uh, with this, starting soon, I think. William said, we're gonna be looking at these signage codes and, and, um, and, and, and I think rethinking possibly the palette. Um, it, it, it's really three or four variation, the same color. But anyway, it just reminds me of the kind of things, and I'm sure there are tons of other things that we're gonna be looking at in terms of signage and, and the things that we wanna just rename, rephrase. Um, and, uh, so I think that's what, you know, my takeaway is from that. Um, this morning, we attended the, uh, the Miami Realtors, uh, ribbon cutting. Um, the mayor and I, and we had, it was just a wonderful thing. They put this beautiful tiki hut on that Reagan Park in that area. And, and one of the things that struck all of us was this beautiful family that were out there playing with their little doggy and their baby and, uh, but it's a beautiful tiki hunt. Go by there, check it out. It gives the, the area a little bit of, a little more character. And, uh, you know, reminds neighbors who lives, who live in that area that, you know, we're thinking about them. And I think the partnership with the Miami Realtors is fantastic. Uh, if you're not aware, they have a building project going up. It's gonna be their international headquarters right next to where they are located now. Um, and that's gonna be just a terrific, um, uh, contribution to that business development side of, of east, uh, east of the city. Um, so, uh, that was wonderful. Um, what's the lady's name that heads the group that was there today?
Anna?
Not the lady that's on the economic board.
Oh, Anna Rodriguez.
Not Anna Rodriguez.
Alicia?
Jennifer.
Jennifer. So I, Jennifer and I were having a side conversation about the, um, uh, Business and Economic Development Task Force. And one of the things that they do, Miami Realtors, is to go in communities and assess, um, um, consumption and who's buying and how they buy them. They buy it online, so forth and so on, which I think would be a great contribution to a conversation with the economic and, and, um, um, development and the business board. I think that's terrific, that they could be a resource, the Miami Realtors, I mean. Um, and, um, I have just two questions. The other, uh, things I wanna say is two questions. Yeah, I, I don't know if I, if I just couldn't open up the, uh, the email, um, William correctly. The Ref Roof Inn is empty, right? Or they still, they still, uh, still transitioning in that?
No, the, uh, uh, the email I forwarded you was from, uh, Mayor Calva's office.
Okay.
Thomas Alcala.
Oh, Thomas, yes.
To tell us that the homeless trust had informed them, they're in the process of ramping down at the Red Roof Inn and that they should be out of there by year end, by the end of this year. Uh, and they did mention that they had a hundred and forty-two families to relocate. So apparently, there's still a hundred and forty-two people, people there, at least a hundred and forty-two.
And it's a tear, it tears, you know, my heart, you know, to have that many families as we're coming on Thanksgiving, Christmas, right? I mean, it's, you know, I don't wanna feel like the Grinch here, you know, because, but there are other issues that affect our community. And I would hope that the, that the, that the county, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I would hope that the county could be more expedient in finding those folks. We're talking about six weeks, more or less, right? Eight weeks before Christmas, maybe less. Um, so thank you for that. And then one last thing, I, I, I've just been curious about this, when you raised the issue about, both of you raised the issue about the new building. And, and so sometimes I'm at that light, you know, at the, at the end of South Royal, uh, you know, ready to turn, to, to leave the city. And, and it just occurred to me, and I was wondering, if the garage exit is going to be there, is there gonna be something in the middle of the street there so that that traffic doesn't immediately turn on that street to leave the bridge? You, you, you follow what I'm saying that, that?
On Hook Square side?
On Hook Square side, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, because, um, one of the things that really burns me up, and a lot of people do this, traffic that's coming from Curtis, they treat the light there and Hook Square, like, they blow it away. They just turn, they turn with the red and then they block Royal Pointiana, South Royal Pointiana. And then we have to wait, and then when the light changes, you know, y- y- you're swinging it. And I'm thinking, boy, if that, if those people coming out of the garage turn in there, this is gonna be a mess. So I hope, I was assuming that there's gonna be a meridian there.
That, that was.
The traffic will have to come back around. Thank you for, that's one less thing to worry about when. That's all, that's all, folks.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, I just wanted to, um, comment on what, um, Councilman Vasquez said about the, uh, Miami Realtors Association, the beautiful tiki hut that they, uh, built for us, a project they, um, this is the second time that, um, they have, uh, enhanced our community with one of their projects to create, um, an attractive outdoor environment that for, uh, residents to gather. Uh, the previous one was the Tiki Hut at the Boat Ramp, which the Miami Realtors Association, uh, sponsored for the city. And now they built the one at Reagan Park, which I think like Councilman, uh, Vasquez said, it's really the first step that we've talked about it for several years about, um, the east side of Miami Springs, you know, bringing enhancements. We started with the South Royal Pointiana project, um, the East Drive project, um, you know, several years ago, going to the state legislature and trying to get the appropriations for that, um, to make those areas just nicer and, um, and do some much-needed work that needs to be there for flood control and other, and traffic control. And now, uh, with the Tiki Hut at Reagan Park, it's just an enhancement of a park. We called it a park, but unless you happen to know it was a park, you might think it belongs, it's a empty lot that, you know, they're gonna build a house on eventually. And now this delineates it as, um, as a park. And I think the next, uh, project that we're gonna be looking at is a playground for there also to, um, enhance the opportunity for the residents in that area to, um, enjoy the, the same kind of amenities that we tend to, to often have on the west side of Miami Springs. So I wanted to thank the Miami Realtors Association for, um, uh, sponsoring this project, but also to welcome them as permanent residents of Miami Springs with the new building that they're going to be built, building, um, uh, in that area. And I've heard that the plans are just stunning. It's gonna be a stunning building with even an overlook for the airport.
Are they doing a mural too?
Don't go there. All right.
I don't know if we put it in the code.
All right. Um, if there's nothing else, I wanna wish everyone a good Thanksgiving. I wanna tell Councilman Best to tell your wife that I am calling.
She wants to do that. She wants to do that.
That we do the Turkey Trot together and so many other of those activities.
I'll have her call you, Mayor.
And, um, to wish everyone a, a good Thanksgiving and to thank our city staff, um, so they do so much. If, if you just drive around the city, you'll catch them doing, um, I'm always amazed even by Prince Field, the amount of maintenance that Prince Field takes to get it ready every night for the new Little League and stuff. And we have staff members out there who are every single day grooming it from, you know, last night's, uh, work and getting it ready for the next night. And so many other things that our, um, city staff does behind the scenes. And, um, we're so thankful for them and to our wonderful residents. Um, very, very grateful to live in this community. And, um, I think all of us up here share in our thankfulness to be able to serve. So with that, um, Happy Thanksgiving and the meeting ended.
You guys. No.
Likewise.